We have a couple of very important things we want to do before we move into the regular meeting. The first one is, we have a resolution, Ms. Jones. Mr. Dean, Blackerbrook, Rowe, Clark, Chamberlain. Have everybody had a chance to take a look at that? Because the pledge of counsel will move that to the regular board meeting as resolution number... Eleven? Number eleven?
No. We already got eleven.
I'll move back to you.
Six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Scott, what do you know about it?
Unless you have any questions, I think if y'all are good with my explanation, I think that's fine.
What's the timeframe on the location of that?
We're a couple of weeks away. The culvert's in, they're doing some finishing work around it. And so I'd say a couple of weeks on that project. Columbus Parkway should be open this week, by the end of this week.
The roundabout?
No, sir, this is the drainage project we have through there.
What about, um, about what came out at, um, how point?
We have met with, well, the mayor and administration have met and we have tasked our engineer to come up with a more affordable solution that we can approach the homeowners with, and we're waiting on them to get back with us.
That, that lake is commonly owned by a homeowner?
That's correct.
Just, just the ones that touch it?
That's correct.
Mr. Mayor, how are you, sir? All right. We are honored to have Captain Healy, and he is going to lay the way over to the podium over here. And one of the things that, that the administration had talked about, and I think Ms. Jones had went and talked to the mayor after he had already spoken with the chief and Captain Healy about a discussion tonight. They are going to talk to us about policies and procedures of the police department. And then we'll have a question and answer period, so if you'll just hold your questions until they're complete, and you jot them down or whatever, then we'll take it one at a time. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Chief and I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the things that we at the Black Police Department are doing that are relevant in what's going on in society today. One of the good things, I think, about our department is we're ahead of the curve when it comes to a lot of the things that are in the news today when we talk about reform in police work. We see a lot of these things over the years coming and really try to put ourselves in a position to kind of be leading the pack. So, um, that does not mean that we don't have room to improve any things, obviously, but we definitely are, you know, on the forefront trying to address these things head-on and have been doing so for a while. First thing that I'm going to talk about a little bit, just is some of our recruiting. Recruiting is pretty difficult, as you can imagine. It was difficult before the situations that we face now. One thing that we have always tried to do is look at having a diverse police department. That diversity brings a lot of different ideas and perspectives to the table that help us figure out how to best police our community. We all can't come up with all the answers individually. We need a lot of different people to come to the table to help give us those answers and those directions. So, what we looked at is the demographics of the city of Opa-Donkay. And we wanted to try to get to a point where the diversity within our department fit the demographics of the city. And that's been a goal of ours for quite a while, actually. We're not there, but it is something that we do work towards. And so our recruiting efforts go into looking at our goal, if you will, and how can we reach that goal. We work with Lee and her staff. We have ads on some different internet sites. Things go out in the local newspaper, obviously, you know, around here, word of mouth, all those types of things. We do job fairs, we do career fairs, we do things with the schools, with Southern Union. We've talked about getting over to Columbus and working over with some of the veterans leaving for Benning. As they get out, they have some programs over there that they can do to take advantage of, um, to get into and kind of tap into that veteran market. So those are some of the things that we do as far as recruiting. When we go through the hiring process, it is a several-step process. And it is not as easy to make it through that process as it would seem. We have, obviously, we have fiscal, uh, excuse me, fiscal agility portion. We have a basic aptitude test that they have to pass that is a test developed by APOST, the folks that certify us as police officers. They have to pass that. Then they come in for an initial interview, and we have a lot of qualifying questions in that interview. There's a lot of things that can keep you from being a police officer, such as criminal history of certain types, certain drug usage, things like that, that prevent you from being a police officer. So that initial interview, we get through a lot of that qualifying information. And then Lieutenant Blackburn begins a background investigation and checks on their work history. And that takes a good bit of time. Once they get through some of those phases, then we go into a polygraph where basically a live tape test to make sure that the information that we have is true and correct and that they're not lying about these things. Once we get to that point, the staff, we sit down and look at all the applicants and, I guess for a better way to put it, we kind of cuss and discuss it and look at the different things that these folks bring to the table and see how we think they can be, you know, an effective part of our police department. Once they're chosen to get hired, it is a lengthy training process. Our in-house police academy, if you will, is about eight weeks. And that right now is, is run by Sergeant Daniel. And he teaches them everything from how to talk on the radio, use of force issues, search and seizure, law, how to answer calls, you name it. If it affects police work, he covers it in that period of time. Then they go to the Alabama Police Academy for 13 weeks. It's a 520-hour academy where they, again, pretty much do the same thing that Sergeant Daniel has already done with them. Once they accomplish that, they can be certified as a police officer in state of Alabama. That's when they get their APOST challenge. We're not satisfied at that point. So when we bring them back, we put them on a shift out in the car with a field training officer, and they do a minimum of about eight weeks with that training officer. In that phase, they're driving a police car, they're talking on the radio, they're figuring out how to do all these things at one time. And they start to answer calls and actually physically take reports. And they're under the constant supervision of an experienced police officer who knows how to do these things. Their supervisors watch over them. Even once that first eight weeks is done, then we still have what we call a shadow phase where supervisors and more experienced officers will kind of follow them around and make sure and observe and make sure they're doing the things that they do. It takes somewhere between six and nine months before they're able to really go out here and do something on their own. They have to pass and prove to us a lot of things before we allow that to happen. One of the other things I think that the chief got to all of y'all is a copy of some of our policies. What we did is, is that is not our entire policy manual. Obviously, that would be probably a thousand pages or more. But we went through and looked at some of the policies, use of force issues, some of our community relations, community policing, biased in policing type policies, things that people are talking about nowadays that may interest you. Those are the policies that we gave y'all. Obviously, if you have a question about something that may not be covered in one of those policies, I can get you or the chief can get you the policy that covers whatever else that, that other topic might be. Speaking specifically about use of force issues, a lot of the things that folks are talking about in police reform now, for example, what they call chokeholds, it's really not a, a good term. It does encompass several different older techniques that some of us old guys were taught way back in the day. But those techniques, to be honest with you, in policing in general across the country, have been banned and not used for a long time. Not going to say that every police department has done away with them, but the majority have. And really, it happened, Darryl Gates, who was police chief in Los Angeles a long time ago in the early 90s, he was the one that kind of led the, the charge in doing away with that. We haven't had that as part of our use of force in quite a while. In fact, our policy prohibits the use of chokeholds, what we call neck restraints, unless it is what we would consider a deadly force situation. And if it's deadly force, really, there are no rules. Everything's, you know, on the table at that point. Trying to think what else. The, some of the things that came to light through the situation and the tragedy with George Floyd, where the officer was kneeling on his neck, that again is something that is not taught, that is not how we teach to restrain somebody. There are techniques that we use to get people on the ground if we need to control them to handcuff them. And we use techniques where we do put pressure on the back, the shoulders, hips area. We don't even like to put pressure on somebody's, that their upper back, in the middle of the back, because that can restrict breathing. So, that is a technique that when Sergeant Daniel teaches in his after class, if that technique is used, it is a momentary, just a brief, until you can get those handcuffs off, and then you come on and you get that person calmed down, get them on their side so that they can breathe better, and we like to get them seated up as soon as possible. So that's, you know, obviously something that really came to light with the video and, and the things that are out there. But that's how we teach. We don't teach those kinds of things. We teach what is, what we consider best police practices. Those practices are determined by groups throughout the country like the International Association of Chiefs of Police, the FOB. There's tons and tons of organizations out here that write extensively on police best practices. And that's what we like to follow. We follow that, we look at case laws, and that's where we get our information and try to guide our policies and then update and teach our officers. Beyond the policies, kind of slipping back into the training function, once we have police officers that are trained and out here, the state of Alabama says that we have to have 12 continuing education units or hours a year for training. We're not satisfied with that. All of our officers get at least that minimum, but we strive to at least double and sometimes some officers triple and quadruple that number of hours. We send, and I know Mr. Motley can attest to this, because he signs a lot of these things where we send officers off for training. We send people to different places. We don't just train our people here. We want them to go other places and meet other police officers and get those experiences and see what kind of trends are in policing throughout the country. Again, with the idea of everybody coming back here to our department and bringing something to the table so that we can discuss it and we can figure out, how do we do this better? We're always looking at the other gentlemen on staff, Captain Cliff, Chief Brown, Captain Clark, Lieutenant Blackburn, we're always looking for different things. How do we improve? What can we do better? And that is something that each of us, when we have our staff meetings a couple of times a week, we bring those ideas to, literally to that table and talk about it. So, that's just a little bit about us, I guess. Questions?
I, I do have a couple of questions. On the, um, when you're conducting a background check on the work history, I know I saw when the president just issued a reform or something today and made us to build, create a database for something where people, um, do something wrong at their previous job, I guess sort of travel within town. So when you conduct the background check on the officers that come in, is it, they have clean records? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And, you know, obviously, depending on the type of information there, there's a lot of, and I don't understand them all, rules through the, the human resources side of things, where there's certain things we can get and certain things that we can't. If they are a certified police officer, we do reach out. I know Lieutenant Blackburn sometimes will actually travel to that agency. We get forms signed to get copies of personnel files, to look for disciplinary actions and issues. In fact, we had Chief Brown, correct me if I'm wrong, a gentleman from Columbus Police Department not too long ago, that when we did his background investigation, there were some things in there that just don't meet our standards. Our standards are a little bit higher, so.
So how do you handle, like, citizen complaints on, like, current officers? So do you have maybe 10 people who have, they complained on the officer? Do they have like a limit before they're recommended or they go? Or how, how do you handle complaining?
There's not a, a set, every complaint is dealt with in the same way. There are always, it depends on the situation. So I guess it's an individual, depending on what the complaint is. So, if somebody comes and complains on a police officer, we have a, a process that they go through to be able to get that complaint to us so that we can get as much information from them about what the issue is, so that we can begin to investigate it. At that point, we do then literally an investigation into that complaint to try to get to the truth of what really happened. If it's a situation where an officer has violated a policy or something to that effect, and it would be a situation where discipline was appropriate, then we would look, take things into consideration, what's that officer's, you know, record like with us? Does he have previous discipline issues? If he has issues, are those issues the same type of complaint as this or same type of issue? So the punishment can get progressively worse, obviously, up to termination. Now, I will tell you that there are some things that the first complaint, we would be going to the mayor and getting Guy Gunner's assistance and advice on seeking termination. So it can range from anything from a write-up to suspension to termination. It really kind of depends on the individual situation. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was going through this, your policy manual, the use of force area, and I'm sure all of the areas of the policy and procedures manual are this way, but portions of it say best practice, portions say federal, there's state, there's modified. Can you kind of explain how you...
Yes, sir. And the reason that we gave that view of it to you is simply for those patents. Okay. Our policy manual, we go through a company called Lexipol. You guys graciously approved us to be able to do this. Lexipol is, was founded by Gordon Ram, who's an expert in police policy. And his company, what they do, they help us, they took our old existing policy manual and they looked at it, and then they compared it to what are best practices throughout the country. And helped develop those policies. So when it says best practice, for example, what that section is, is that is, in the police world, that is what is the best practice across the country. That's what agencies are adopting, that's what's approved through, like, the IACP, FOP, organizations like that. If it says federal, that is a mandated by federal law. That is an issue that touches on something that has to do with a federal law. Use of force, there's a lot of federal guidelines in use of force. So that's what it's referring to. And again, it says state, then the state would be referring to state laws. And they, the other thing about Lexipol that's great for us, they continually monitor this. It's not a one-and-done thing. This isn't every year or all the time throughout the year, Lexipol will send us, send me, an update and says, hey, we want to change this policy because, for example, there's a, the Supreme Court ruled on a new case, and that may change something about what we as police officers are allowed to do or not allowed to do. So they will notify us of that, they will have made those corrections in that policy, so that our policy will then always be up-to-date and current with state, federal, and best practices. So we get those several times throughout the year, and then we can push that information to our officers. And part of Lexipol, and this is something that we're working on getting implemented, is it has a, what we call a daily training function. So every day, the officers will be forced, when they log onto their computer, to read a portion of a policy. Let's just say use of force. They may even have to read the section on deadly force. And then it will ask them a question or two that they have to answer out of that policy. And then they can continue to log into their computer. And we're able to track that to make sure everybody's doing it and all those kinds of things. So it's, it's something that really forces, or will force us and our officers on a daily basis to make sure that we know our policies and are acting with them.
The president signed the new executive order today.
Yes, ma'am.
For policing. I just got it this afternoon, and I'm guessing y'all go in that just then, because let's call in for some changes.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You know, one of the big changes, and I know the, I saw his speech this afternoon, was about the banning of chokeholds. Our policy, as it sits in front of you, reads exactly what the president put into that reform today, and which is consistent with some of the other people that have pushed forward with the reform.
Yeah, that was what I was going to ask, how much of what was executively passed today was what, and I'm sure you have to do that. But not only with that, are we allowed to add to our local level that something may not have been in the executive order that the president passed today?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, that might be a better question for Mr. Gunner than me, but I, we're...
And I'm asking that question because, uh, the reason I'm asking that question because there are some concerns that there were things that did not go into the executive order that had been submitted. And so this is the question, that's the reason for asking if they were not submitted in the executive order, if does it allow us as a local police force to add on something that would be reasonable for our people to do?
Speaking strictly from the police department's side, when it comes to our policies, yes, we could incorporate something that we talk about here into a policy. If we did that, that would be a policy that we would probably go through, Mr. Gunner, to make sure all of the legal side of it and everything was, was appropriate. But yes, ma'am, we could do that. And there will be some things, and this a little bit touches, I think, this bits on what you were asking too, about the police misconduct and this database. You know, once that database is kept up or, or set up, I guess, and is something that can be accessed, then that would be something that would become part of our hiring process, that that would be, we would review that and, and run these potential hires through that system, you know, to see if they were police officers elsewhere, whether they told us they were or not initially. So that would be something that we would change in-house based on.
Okay. 12 or more educational hours are any dedicated to cultural diversity training for the officers?
We do cultural diversity training. We've had, and I can't remember that gentleman's name, Auburn Police Department set that up, and we sent a bunch of officers to that. The city, we had one, I believe it was last year, that we had one that was for the entire city that we did. It's something that we talk about throughout our training. One of the things about policing, and I actually give this class up, I can speak on this, one of the important things about policing is you have to know the area that you're going to be policing, you have to know the things that are normal about that area, okay? Different cultures do things differently, you know? People do things differently. There's different neighborhoods in this city that there's things that are normal in one place that are different in another place. And we have to learn those things as police officers, because what we're looking for are the abnormal things, what stands out, what is different? Why does this not fit into the picture? So, um, it's really something that we talk about on a daily basis, just like de-escalation. That's a topic that is built into just about every time we have any kind of use of force training. We talk about de-escalation, it's part of what we do, it's just being incorporated into it. So we have specific training that's called, let's say, cultural diversity training, but a lot of that is built into the things and the classes that we teach and that we send off. Other questions? Captain, we thank you for coming and having you guys be here. I think that the city of Opa-Donkay is blessed to have the police force that we do. I think that you guys do a wonderful job, and I would say thank you both. We, as a city captain, are committed to making sure you guys have what you need to do, do your job. So if there's ever an issue that needs to be processed back through Mr. Motley for us to be able to take a look at and hopefully provide it for you, so. Y'all have blessed us, and I don't think there's, I can't think of things that we've asked for that y'all have given us, so we appreciate it very much. Thank you. Ms. Phil?
Good afternoon. Can you... Good afternoon. We're asking the council to approve a contract for uniforming things. The beginning of the day was June 8th for white power services. The lead was mailed to four vendors on the day it was received. Opening the contract deal with downtown cleaners on the sole deed east of the station. Next, we're asking the council to approve a contract for downtown iron activity policy. Beginning of the day was June 8th for white power services. The lead was mailed to 15 vendors. Two days were received. Reclaiming the contract, the award is an inventory company on the sole deed east of the station. Last, we're asking the council to approve a contract for home rent, mountain switch, and bids and tests and rents. Beginning of the day was June 8th for white power services. The lead was mailed to 15 vendors. Two days were received. Reclaiming the contract, the award is an inventory company on the sole deed east of the station.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, quiet here, Mr. Brown.
Okay. We're going to move right into our meeting. So I'd like to call Opa-Donkay City Council meeting, June 16th, 2020. Order, all roll, please. Ms. Jones?
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Pitts?
Here.
Mr. Smithy?
Here.
Mr. Cannon?
Derek? Mr. Smith? Here.
I am going to leave some of the invitation, followed by Jared Banksen and Ben Bell from Horse Scout Troop 858. Y'all have a third member?
Um, Carson Bass. Um, Carson Bass.
Um, Carson Bass. And so after I do the invitation, we'll ask you guys to leave us in the pledge. If you all will stand, please. By the God, we offer you the thanks for the opportunity to be here together, to gather in a community that is committed to serving you. We thank you for the policemen that we have in our city. We thank you for how they handle themselves and how they take care of the things that, that we don't even know about. We thank you for the opportunity to be here, gathered tonight publicly, to take the business of the city and to handle it...
of the city and to handle it, and handle it with, uh, your guidance and your grace. We offer, uh, thanks for each and every member of the, here tonight. We thank you for what they mean to our city, what they mean to their families, and what they mean to, uh, to us as individuals. We pray these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
May everyone be strong to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Y'all, as, uh, previously received the copy of the minutes of the June second, two thousand twenty council meeting, is there a motion to accept the present? Let's say.
Second.
Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Have none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President, members of the council, uh, Captain, either you explain about Chief Ben, confined to force?
No, sir, I did not to everybody.
Okay, all right, but to, to these guys?
No, sir.
Chief, that's confined to force, he's at the mall. All right, so, uh, uh, the city financial summary for May, each of you have a copy of that. As always, if you have questions, don't hesitate to call me, Joey, or Cindy. And speaking of Joey, I'm going to ask him to step forward and give the May twenty twenty building permits report.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council?
The totals for May were, uh, total permits, fifty-four permits, eight million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty cents. Again, the driving force of new single-family homes, that was six million, sixteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty cents. Um, the market, housing market continues to be very strong, but this is year-to-date totals, uh, eighty-seven million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine dollars and twenty-nine cents, with, uh, two hundred and twenty-nine new single-family homes, and no indication that there's any slowdown, uh, in that area of the economy. So we're, we're proud of that, and, uh, have any questions about this, just?
Thank you, Joey. Did, uh, Nancy Carlton, Ben, Ben, Ben Dicker, like it? Nancy here?
Well, I, I'm going to present this anyway, because we got it. And, um, Barbara prepared it, and, uh, this is for a group called Moms Demand Action, and it has to do with National Gun Violence Awareness Month. Whereas every day, one hundred Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average, there are nearly thirteen thousand gun homicides every year. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is a mayor's highest responsibility, and whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people that shouldn't happen. Whereas in January twenty thirteen, Hadya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade, was tragically shot and killed just weeks later while standing with friends in Kenwood, Chicago. And whereas a group of her friends asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, they chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when they're out in the woods. Orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas by wearing orange and commemorating national gun violence awareness, that happened on the first Friday in June, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands, and to encourage responsible gun ownership to keep our children safe. Whereas the month of June is dedicated to promoting public awareness of the importance of gun safety. So as Mayor of the City of Opelika, on behalf of the City Council, I hereby declare June twenty twenty as National Gun Violence Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to support their commu-, our community's effort to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value given lives. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, City's Communications, Mr. Jones?
Okay, now a good time, if you would like to speak to the Mayor of the Council, to come to the podium, to my left here, your right. Please sign into the signing sheet with your full name, address, phone number, um, and also, I'm going to bring the microphone up. If you can, please either speak in, directly into the microphone, or hold it so we can hear exactly what you're saying, please. You get five minutes or less, thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Todd Rafferty, live at nineteen oh three Auburn Lane here in Opelika. Um, I'm the Vice President for the Community Foundation of East Alabama, and I just wanted to give you a report of, um, our current fundraiser that we had recently that the City Council supported Opelika Giving Day. Um, the Community Foundation brought in twelve organizations, nonprofit organizations this year, Opelika Giving Day's twenty-four hour fundraising campaign, and just so happened, it's online, so it's really easy and really safe. Um, we did as much marketing as we possibly could to make sure it was going to be just as successful this year with all the restrictions and quarantine. Um, I'm proud to announce that we raised thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and nine cents, and brought in three hundred and forty-eight donors, which is about a hundred more donors than we had last year, and almost ten thousand dollars more than, than we had brought in last year. I also wanted to, um, say you, City Council, and, and the Mayor, thank you so much for your, your continued support of Opelika Giving Day. Last year was our, our first annual Opelika Giving Day, and you guys started off right with a, a sit-off, and we appreciate your, your support and your donation again this year as well. So thank you so much for everything you do for the community.
Thank you, Todd.
Hello. Uh, again, I met you first time two weeks ago, very first time I ever spoke to the City Council about any issue. My name is William Mowhaw, and I am an Opelika resident, uh, as a resident of the high school. And, uh, there's some ongoing issues I want to bring to the council's, uh, attention. I'm asking for your help, your guidance, your intervention, and any, uh, suggestions you have, as well as public. I came here twenty-two years ago, when Singleton was here, asking for a court called asylum, because I'm not getting any help in Opal, from the Democrats or Republicans, about any legislation that will allow me to go forward and establish commerce, trade, and life, liberty, pursuit of happiness in relation to that, that will save people's lives, help promote new technology, education, advancement, narrow space, and, and the whole works that comes with that, uh, national security with military advancements, transportation, land, uh, land, air, sea, and space. Um, this has been blockaded far too long. It's, it's something I created when I was a boy at age four, nineteen sixty-four. And the more you know about it, the more you'll see how critical this technology is. And I, and I'm, I'm just a bad flagghaster as to why my representatives in Michigan, Alabama, and Washington would not take five minutes to look at or inquire about it. Now, this was the issue with KIV before this last election, and Tom Lottley and Joe LaVern, I, I contacted them all, I wanted to get a town meeting to discuss why they're not dealing with this issue, and dealing with legislation that will help promote, uh, a political platform from which I can address this, since I'm not getting any support from the Democrats or Republicans. So I'm forced to run as a presidential candidate, as an independent, but yet I am, uh, constantly kept from the public, I'm censored by the media, I can't get sent, uh, signatures to get me on the ballot, because I work, I represent the labor class, I can't go door to door, I got to have grassroots campaign established, and it's, you only got five months left. This ain't going to happen without your help. Now, I contacted the FBI in two thousand sixteen because things were going on where I, uh, uh, made myself available through the, through the two thousand fifteen, sixteen campaign election cycle. And, uh, so this isn't anything, anything new. Now, the technology I have is very simple, and I'm going to show you. I'm not sure exactly how it's going to, how it's going to work here, because it's all, depends on the, uh, distribution of weight, but it'd be enough to show you that it can be manufactured. I've done fifty years of research in this, and as far as the, the applications for safety issues, it goes far beyond anything being manufactured for, for, uh, commercial, military, air flight. Uh, detachable unit, crashes in the ocean, you have cargo and passenger units that can resurface, to make this all, uh, applicable to shore, and with, uh, with a buoy system, everything that you cannot apply to current aircraft. But again, remember this, this is a basic, and it's what you apply to it that makes it land, air, sea, or space. And, uh, it can be manufactured over and over again, it's based on lighter principle. That can be seriously damaging war, an air-to-air, air, uh, land-to-air missile, and it still would retain flight. It still will land, and it still will carry its weight, over fourteen times its own mass weight. No aircraft can do that, that can be manufactured today, but it can. Now, what I want to do is set up a system that will build land, air, sea, and space, but it'll be cheaper and be more usable for, uh, for space, uh, reentry and more cost-effective. So I see a timeout, I want to, I want to stand by your standards, I know the time goes by quick, and I can't give it all to you in five minutes, but we are T minus five in the county already now. Because if I don't get your help, as an independent, get on that platform, get on a national debate with the two candidates, which is more like dog vomit now, where you're getting, you're getting a candidate, uh, from the Democrats that are being regurgitated, regurgitated again, you're not getting nowhere. And I want to do something, um, Black Lives Matter. I don't want to overshadow them, I want to work with them. And your president has come up short on that signature that he, he signed, I think it was earlier today or yesterday. So I want to thank you for your time, I want to talk to somebody individually, I hope to talk to the mayor, maybe he can give me suggestions, but I need to get people involved. If I can't, that technology's going to Russia or China. I've lost fifty-five years of my life. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mrs. Burton. I resigned now at fourteen sixteen Allen Street, in Opelika, in Opelika. My question is to the, I tend to the City Council to be right back, you know, after my home, twenty-seven on three pound hall, was flooded with Opelika City sewage. I was told by the city attorney that I was going to have a trial. Well, I went to the U. County Justice Center, I had a trial, I had to stand trial and plead my case as though I was an attorney, and I wasn't an attorney, because the city attorney had stated that they didn't want to have my attorney to defend me because she had prior obligation. My attorneys had been intimidated, and I want to know why. Does Black Lives really matter? Do they matter to you? Does it matter that we have to matter where it matters? We're in the middle of a pandemic. The coronavirus is serious. Each of us should have a mask on to protect not only yourselves, the other part. Well, we've had companies, but it seems like the city just doesn't like to care about me and my family, and I am very upset about it, very upset. And so my question is, Mr. Mayor, what do you think I should do? Or what can the city do regarding my family? Because they've done everything they could to gun us down, to try to stop us, to try to block us, and I'm very angry, very angry. Nobody should have to come in your home, stand in at least ten to twelve inches of gross sewage from everybody's house in the community, and it affected my health, and I am very angry about it. So my question is, when the city attorney, like Attorney Stan Moore, says to my public service, y'all don't have anything to worry about, and I think, I'm angry. And I intend to do further, but just the Supreme Court, and I won't remember it. So what do you recommend? What's going to be there?
I'm, I'm going to further Mr. Gunnar. Mr. Gunnar, haven't we litigated yet?
Uh, my recollection is that, uh, it was, uh, that Judge Hughes, Circuit Judge, Lee County, uh, entered a summary judgment in favor of the city and ESG. That was eventually appealed, uh, up through the Alabama Supreme Court. The Supreme Court affirmed Judge Hughes' decision to dismiss the lawsuit.
Excuse me?
And, uh, my recollection is that, uh, Ms. Burton's attorneys have asked for a rehearing on that case, and most of the rehearing is pending at present time.
And when I say something, no, they entered a judgment of no opinion. That was, was on paper. So I had to go further than that. I've been writing other people, I have even wrote another two of them, and I'm going to choose a way to hear back from her, and if I have to go further, I'll be, and I'm going to be heard, my voice will be heard, I guarantee you that, because it's not right, and it's not fair. And I'm tired of this good old voice system. All of these attorneys, y'all, working together to try to stop African-Americans and some of the other minorities, that's not right. This stuff is not right. This is racist. This is injustice, and it is not right. And I'm going to speak about peace, and I'm going to tell the truth. And if Dr. King was living to be thankful, he would just be, just disgusted with the way this system is, because he was for justice and peace for all, and it is not right. There is no way you all would live in a country like this, with two hundred and six thousand different diseases downstairs and a hundred and forty thousand upstairs, there is no way. And can you imagine just the stench of what we had to deal with, and all that we lost, including our health? That's not right. You would not have gone through it, you wouldn't have dealt with it, there is no way, and I'm tired of it. And this system over here, it needs to be changed, and they need somebody to speak up for the African-Americans and minorities, and people of all races, not just other, our races, it's not- and minorities and people of all races, not just other races. It's not right. And I'm tired of it. And I say to people, if they can't help you, take your hands and sell them.
I'm sorry your time is up, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. I can only say, it sounds a little bad what's going on, but in my instance, I'm not here to
Thank you, name and address.
Oh, my name is Lindberg B. Jackson, 814 North Carter Street, Auburn, Alabama. But I'm not here to resolve the city's business. I'm here to say, as my father would say to my mother, during the midst of an argument when he didn't do what he thought that she should have, he said, "Baby, honey, sugar." He says, "When I do wrong," since nobody, I'm always reminded of that wrong, but when I do right, no one remembers. I come to say to you guys today, I appreciate what you all have done at 1113 Lake Street. Councilman Jones making a recommendation that I be given some time to work through the difficulties that we have with my aunt and which is Mrs. Bernice LaFundroy. And giving us the time that we needed to change and turn around things there. I want to say thank you. The hospitality, the kindness will not be obliterated. We plan to move forward. As we speak right now, we are moving forward. And the mayor signed a document with these building code officials today. And I just want to say thank you because I'm sure you guys are reminded as I just heard of, whatever you do wrong, people don't forget. What you do right, people very seldom return and say thank you. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Hello. My name is Julie T. M. O. A. R. R. Seventeen twenty-eight apartment in Cherry. Um, well, I'm addressing, I want to address Ms. Jones because I live in Woodland. And I live in Cherry, which they consider to be one of the worst side of town, which is the one. We deal with so much gunfire over there. Like, I have a five-year-old son that literally sleeps in his apartment because his bed is too close to the window and he gets eaten. I had to get this to the police, took it to the highway board. I took it to Ms. Jones' netting. This has to stop. Oh, boy, so much child abuse here. I don't know if we, I called extra control just in front of basically. I called and said, "Hey, can you get somebody in control if I'm trying to sleep?" You know, so I don't have to stay up to watch my son sleep so we won't roll out there at gunshots. Um, I will say the Oak Black Police Department has stepped up tremendously with, you know, coming through the area. But what happened to when I was a child, the police would get out and let us trust them. They would get out and interact with us. If you was just a chocolate, a sticker, you know, just something. We don't trust them. So, when something happens and they come, did you see? No, we don't see. Do your job. Because we don't trust them. We have to build a trust back between us and the police officers. Now, you have some that come through and they, you know, they wave and they do what I feel like they should do with everybody. It'd be kind. Because if they don't be kind to us, we're not gonna be kind to them. Um, I feel like it's gonna be one day where something tragic happens with a kid and it's gonna be an uh-oh, when it could have been prevented a long, long time ago. Um, I think that we need to step up like on the weekends. If you see a crowd, you know, the police, they see something, say something. I do that. And I still don't get help. What can we do to get it to where if they see the police, they don't do it? But if they know they're gonna come, they're running around with their flashlight in five minutes and leave. If it were to happen, it happens often. I've been living there for five years. I can't tell you what exciting summer that I had. When my son could go outside and ride his bike, even broad daylight. We can't let our kids out to go and play because we too worried about gunshot. Lewis don't have names. They don't have eyes. So, I just wanted to know what is it that we could do as a community? I mean, of course, I'm probably the only person that came from my ward, but that's because nobody, they don't want to say nothing because they feel like everything is gonna be resolved about the issue. So, I'm here to have my community on my side. And I mean, I just want to answer all how we can help.
Mr. President, I ask for you. I can't give you an answer how we can resolve it, but I can say
You can't never give your answer for anything. Again, for five years, you have been in my ward. And I know my time is up, but for five years, you don't campaign in my neighborhood.
Exactly.
You, I don't see you. The first time I saw you was in National Night Out. You don't come to my neighborhood.
I will not respond because I will not, I will not hear this.
I agree.
But thank you, police officers. We do have a schedule and I know that you're over there very frequently. And it has been through my leadership since I've been here continuing to get police, uh, community policing. And thank you for what you do.
Understood.
Yeah. Would you mind me speaking right here, please?
Go ahead.
My name is Oscar Penn. I'm the president of Concerned Systems Group of Black. And my concern, uh, is I came in late on Captain Healy's presentation. And I don't know if it was mentioned or not, and if I didn't get that answer that I'm gonna ask for. I apologize to Captain Healy and the council. But my concern is the information about the police officer making the racist slurs and the transparency of that investigation. And it is not only about the black community because I've had to have deals with our police department in the years. And I've watched them de-escalate a lot of programs. And I've walked up in some situations and they've listened to me and they've done a very, very professional job. I have no problem with the work that they do and how they accommodate our citizens. But if there's a confrontation or situation where an officer is making racist slurs, that's another form of police brutality. And I would feel that with professionalism that a lot of our officers have shown over the years that that would be something that they would highly stand against because it reflects badly upon the men and women of our police department and the citizens of our community. Now, the thing that I've always taken for granted is that sometimes, oh, but like it just, we just let things go and we just look at things at nonchalantly, but we have to put a stop to that now.
Exactly.
Because in our community and in this country, United States, there's a big thing going on right now. And everybody's their part of it. And not only does Black Lives matter to me, but they should be at each and every one of us. And the whole concern is that we got to scoop around our own front door before we can start scooping around someone else. And but I like that say, I have no problem with our police department. Matter of fact, all of the white policemen that I've known have treated me very well. The only problem that I've ever had with Oak Black Police Department was with a black police officer that called me a nigger. And what's so ironic about that? He was the police officer that we went to fight for back in the day when his ticket book was slapped out his hand and called a nigger and we got him tenure on his job. So, these are the things that I understand, you know, for sure, these are what I've dealt with. But that's all I'm asking for transparency so that we can be understanding of what's going on because policy procedures are well taken care of. But those things that violate policy and procedure is what we need to know about. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. Uh, you did miss Captain Healy's presentation. And I do think that once they get through with the internal investigation that it will be, we may public to, as to what happened and what the results of the investigation will be.
Uh, my name is Jay Golden. I live at 601 Lakewood Street.
Is it about the public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, wait till the public hearing.
Okay, this is my first time, so it's okay.
Okay. Having none, call roll, please. General business, Mr. Jones, please.
First item is a request for the HBO documentary filming on North Knight Street tonight on 616.
Is there a motion for approval? Somebody? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, Colorado police.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye. Second is a request for downtown Juneteenth peaceful march for social justice on Friday, 619.
Is there a motion for approval? Is there a second? Second. Is there a discussion?
I have a question. Um, since I'm a part of that, do I need to add say my vote? To the man who got it?
On your end, financial literacy is something we are looking.
Uh, Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye. Third request is from the Oak Black Rotary Club for Burger Wars event downtown on 822.
Is there a motion for approval? Somebody? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, Colorado police.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye. Another request is for an alcohol license by Jam Food Company Incorporated doing business as Cool Moon Barbecue.
Is there a motion for approval? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, Colorado police.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye. Request for alcohol license by PK Nine Management LLC doing business as Exxon One Auto.
Is there a motion for approval? Somebody? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, Colorado police.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye. Our first public hearing is to amend the Town Light Pud Master Plan.
Uh, this is a public hearing. I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my left and do so at this time. Having no one, I declare public hearing closed.
Second public hearing is to amend the Canning Gate Master Plan.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my left and do so at this time. Having no one, I declare public hearing closed.
Third public hearing is to amend zoning ordinance and map rezoning 6.6 acres on Dale Avenue.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my left and do so at this time. Having no one, I declare public hearing closed.
Fourth public hearing is to amend zoning ordinance and map rezoning 2.87 acres on 1402 Fitzpatrick Avenue.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my left and do so at this time.
My name is Jay Golden. I live at 601 Lakewood Street and also own a rental property at 501 Woodland Street. Very involved in that red heights neighborhood and I believe in 14.2 zoning of that acreage behind. But Fitzpatrick Avenue parcel would not benefit. Uh, the neighborhood or the city of Waukesha for it to be rezoned to a commercial zoning. I believe that we should stick to the residential zoning and that anything other than residential is gonna chivalry our neighborhood and have it isolated for that whole street. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Disposal. Um, you all would address that in the primary meeting?
Uh, yes, sir. Good evening, Councilmember, Mayor, I guess. Uh, the African is requesting for his own 2.87 acres just adjacent behind some property that they're also purchasing, which is, I believe, around two, two and three acres as well running on Fitzpatrick there. The, uh, the development that the African is looking to do would be to utilize the front half of that, the, that R2 zone property for a commercial office use there along with some development right along Fitzpatrick. Uh, there would be required, if it were to be rezoned, some buffer yards against the residential portions of residential zone properties, uh, which would include fences and, uh, fences and six-foot evergreen shrubs, double rows of evergreen shrubs or a twenty-foot underserved, uh, visually penetrable, uh, natural buffer. Uh, so there are some protections that would be provided there against the residential properties if the property was to be rezoned to solve that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the fifth public hearing is to amend zoning ordinance and map rezoning 0.7 acres at 1813 Old Clones Road.
Let me back up one second and say, I declare that public hearing closed. I now declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my left and do so at this time. Having no one, I declare public hearing closed.
Okay, the sixth public hearing is a wead baiting assessment at 12 East Johnson Avenue.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my right and do so, excuse me, to my left and do so at this time. Having no one, I declare public hearing closed.
The seventh public hearing is another weed baiting assessment at 16 Bartlett's King Woodward.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my left and do so at this time.
Mr. President, I have written by there is that it appears that it's already taken care of. Is that the vacant lot right there between the Rooker store used to be? I'm asking this question because I've written by today and I think that is the address and it looks like you have taken care of this.
All of these have been cut. Cities expense, so what we're doing now is just assessing the cost factor. Yes, it has been taken care of.
Going outside, I declare public hearing closed.
Our next public hearing is for a weed baiting assessment at 1108 Chandler Avenue.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my left and do so at this time. Having no one, I declare public hearing closed.
Next public hearing is weed baiting assessment at 514 Old Clones Road.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my left and do so at this time. Having no one, I declare public hearing closed.
Next public hearing is another weed baiting assessment at 1109 Magnolia Street.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my left and do so at this time. Having no one, I declare public hearing closed.
Our last public hearing is another weed baiting assessment at 105 Bond Avenue.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my left and do so at this time. Having no one, I declare public hearing closed. Be it to his family?
West and Council to approve the contract for uniform cleaning. The opening day is June the eighth of the Friday, Friday, the day of the four vendors, one day of the sea. Recommit a contract. We award the downtown clean on the Saturday in these circumstances.
Is there a motion for approval?
Blue or blue, second.
And a motion, this second, is there a discussion? Having a call roll, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy? Mr. Smithy.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
We ask the council to approve the contract for downtown planning activity polls. The date opening day is June the eighth of March, Friday. The bid was mailed to four vendors, one bid was received. Recommend a contract, we award the main polls on the sole deed, these questions.
Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a call roll please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithy.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
We ask the council to approve the contract for whole, whole, rack, mountain, switch, and fix, capacitor banks. The date opening day is June the eighth of March, Friday. The bid was mailed to fifteen vendors, two bids were received. Recommend a contract, we award the company Incorporated on the sole deed, these questions.
Is there a motion for approval? Somebody? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a call roll please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithy.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Resolutions, Mr. Gunn.
Mr. President, the first resolution authorizes a refund to Redondo Incorporated in the amount of one thousand eight hundred seventy-one dollars and sixty-six cents for occupational license fees paid in error.
Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a call roll please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithy.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number two authorizes a refund to uh East Construction LLC of Dable Island Mountain in the amount of five thousand twenty-seven dollars and four cents uh for a uh bu- a building permit fee. In this case, the owner of the property has uh elected to hire another contractor for this job and therefore this contractor is due to be refunded. This amount, the new contractor will be responsible for paying the building fees.
Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a call roll please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithy.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
As part of the CARES Act that was recently passed by Congress, the city of Oakley will receive an additional amount of one hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars uh for housing utility, housing and utility assistance and micro enterprise assistance you have before you resolution number three, which approves an amendment to the CDBG program year two thousand nineteen to account for this additional funding.
Is there a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I have a few questions on the micro enterprise assistance. How are we gonna uh, is there a process and an application that um the businesses will receive?
Would you want to? Um, applications are um in place, but we won't be accepting applications until the funding actually is received and it'll basically be a first time, first served, will be advertised and promoted on our website, advertised to you.
What's the um, you said there's an application in process, so you haven't received any yet?
We put the applications together, we're waiting for administrative approval, so um you know, once the funding is there, we'll be able to pass those out and have people complete them.
So where are the requirements for people or businesses to apply for?
The business owner must be low to moderate income to qualify, and that'll be based on their tax return and we'll look at um profits prior to COVID and profits after COVID. It'll also include number of employees prior to the number of employees currently, full time or part time.
So how, is it a certain amount of wages, like if you have twenty applicants, are you giving them, is there a maximum amount of money?
The maximum amount per business is um, let's say three thousand dollars. That's of course their rent, mortgage, or utilities.
Okay, will you, can you submit like to the council so we can like also notify people in the community to like this?
When the funding is received?
Right, when you start, well, when you have the application ready.
When I had it ready, I'll let you know.
In addition to that, Ms. Thrift has worked with uh the comptroller, Ms. Boyd, about how to determine the applicants to make sure that they're eligible. Others? Call roll please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithy.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
The fourth resolution deals with a second amendment to the CDBG program for two thousand nineteen. Previous resolution dealt with new funding from the federal government. Uh, this is an amendment to transfer twenty-nine thousand dollars of unspent funding to the micro enterprise assistance program.
Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Yeah, I have concerns about that, but I know I've requested for um, um, and it's out of sidewalk planning, so I know I've requested for some sidewalk repairs on South Fourth Street and maybe some curving on Fair Street. So my concern is why would we take money from sidewalk, from current CDBG to add to COVID when we're already spending a hundred, one hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and eighty-three on um micro enterprise assistance?
The money that we have, um, if everyone exercises the entire allotment that we're requesting for business, we wouldn't be able to assist as many people. Um, and right now, due to the circumstances, it just, since the money is not being used currently, it just seems prudent to move in and help more businesses um in this time.
Well, I guess why, why is the money not being used currently if there are some things that need to take place?
Well.
I I'll speak to that. Uh, we we do uh we do regularly ask for locations of sidewalks and I I was unaware that that you put in a request for that, but we'll have someone go take a look at uh and and if it beats our criteria, then we're happy to look at those and and look at sidewalk replacement. Curving's a little different because that that may not qualify exactly, but uh the sidewalks, I think that is something provided we have, and we do have funds available, we could probably make those repairs.
So you're saying even if this twenty-nine thousand dollars is transferred over to micro enterprise, um, there's other funding that's available to?
Yes, ma'am. We do have, we do have some existing funding, I believe, from last year's uh fiscal plan and our fiscal year and then something this year as well that we could use still towards sidewalks. So this is, this doesn't complete our our sidewalk construction budget for uh for uh CDBG funds.
May I ask, Lisa, I was thinking that maybe we were adding to funds so we could do more for rent assistance as well as for businesses?
Only for the micro businesses. The funding that we have at the fifteen hundred a piece per household, that will net us around forty households that we can assist. Using the rest of the funding towards micro enterprise will assist approximately forty five businesses.
Okay, so it's forty-five businesses, small businesses that we will be helping?
Yes.
And forty households as far as rent or essential utilities?
Rent, mortgage, or utilities. And everyone has to qualify as low on their income and have proven that they've lost their job or reduced hours due to COVID.
You said rent, mortgage, or mortgage?
Mm-hmm.
What was the max, what can they get for mortgage assistance?
It tops out at fifteen hundred per household.
And we're talking about how, it's not utility assistance, right?
It can be a combination of the three or only one is what their needs are, based on what their needs are.
Others? Call roll please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithy.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number five approves the assessment of a weed lien in the amount of one hundred twenty-five dollars thirty-two cents against the property located at twelve East Johnson Avenue.
Is there a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a call roll please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithy.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number six approves the assessment of a weed lien in the amount of one hundred seventy-four dollars seventy-one cents against the property located at six ten Martin Luther King Boulevard.
Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a call roll please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithy.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number seven approves the assessment of a weed lien in the amount of one hundred thirty-eight dollars thirty-four cents against the property located at eleven oh eight Chandler Avenue.
Is there a motion for approval?
No.
And a motion, a second, is there a discussion? Having a call roll please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithy.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number eight approves the assessment of a weed lien in the amount of six hundred five dollars fifty-nine cents against the property located at five fourteen Old Columbus Road.
Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a call roll please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithy.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number nine approves the assessment of a weed lien in the amount of two hundred seventeen dollars and four cents against the property located at eleven oh nine Magnolia Street.
Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a call roll please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithy.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Uh, resolution number ten approves the assessment of a weed lien in the amount of two hundred five dollars eighty-four cents against the property located at one oh five Bond Avenue.
Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a call roll please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithy.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Thank you. Orders, Mr. Gunn.
We have one, one more.
Dismissed, sorry.
During construction of the COVID replacement project on Rocky Road Road, it was discovered a subsurface condition that was not known at the time of bidding that will require the additional dirt and fill rock uh uh to structurally improve the road via that location. And you have before you a resolution approving change order number one to the contracts between the city of Oakley and Hoodner Construction Company. This change order will increase the contract amount by twenty-five thousand one hundred eighty dollars and the new contract amount will be three hundred ninety-one thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars.
Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a call roll please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithy.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Orders, Mr. Gunn.
Mr. President, the first ordinance is before the council for first reading and comes to the council with a positive recommendation of the Oakley Planning Commission. If adopted, this ordinance will amend the development plan for the Town Lake subdivision Pud Development.
Ask for a member of the council to introduce this ordinance. My pleasure. Ms. Smithy, thank you for doing so.
Uh, the second ordinance is also before the council for first reading. This ordinance comes to the council with a positive recommendation of the Oakley Planning Commission. If this ordinance is adopted, it will amend the Cannon Gate Pud Master Plan.
Ask for a member of the council to introduce this ordinance.
My pleasure.
Mr. Cannon, thank you for doing so.
Resolution, I mean ordinance number three uh is a zoning ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Oakley. Also comes to the city council with a positive recommendation from the Oakley Planning Commission. If adopted, this ordinance will zone, will rezone approximately um six point six acres located at thirty-four seventeen Dale Avenue from an R five M zone, which is a high density residential district, to a C three district, which is a general commercial district.
Ask for a member of the council to introduce this ordinance.
My pleasure.
Ms. Smithy, thank you for doing so.
Ordinance number four uh is also before the council for first reading, also comes to the council with a positive recommendation of the uh Oakley Planning Commission. This ordinance is adopted will uh rezone approximately two point eight seven acres uh located at fourteen oh two Fitzpatrick Avenue from an R two district, which is a low density residential district, to a C two district, which is an office retail district.
Ask for a member of the council to introduce this ordinance, please.
My pleasure.
Ms. Smithy, thank you.
Ordinance number five uh is also before the council for first reading and comes to the council with a positive recommendation of the Oakley Planning Commission. If adopted, this uh this ordinance will rezone the uh or amend the zoning map of the city of Oakley to rezone a fossil land located at eighteen thirteen Old Columbus Road containing approximately seven tenths of acre from an M one district, which is an industrial district, to an R four district, which is a medium density residential district.
Ask for a member of the council to introduce this ordinance, please.
My pleasure.
Mr. Cannon, thank you for doing so.
One other thing, this is to remind the council members and the mayor that the first date of qualification of the city's municipal election uh will be the first Tuesday in July, that's two weeks, and that will also be a meeting date of the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Uh, we have some, a form is where some uh, the first two on here, we uh, we ask for uh recommendations for our performance to two vacancies we have on the Downtown Redevelopment Authority, and those recommendations have um come to us.